All right, we're going to get going. I'd like to welcome everybody here and appreciate Principal Walden for having us here tonight. It's a wonderful place. It's going to get a lot more wonderful.
Yes, soon, very soon.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is a town hall type format. We're legally bound to have one public hearing and we're going to have more than that. But today, we're convening as our budget committee, not as the board. And the board is actually also the official budget committee for the district. So with that, I'm going to call the hearing to order. I think we all know the ground rules in terms of if you want to speak and ask a question or say something, we want to keep it relatively short, 60 seconds to 90, to a minute and a half. We want to be respectful of others. You might hear opinions of those that you disagree with, and that's part of the democratic process. And we do it well and we're respectful for each other and to each other. One person shall -- we won't call on you until other people have had a chance to talk. We also have some translators in the audience, so if you're here to translate, could you stand up and announce yourself and what you'd be translating?
Hi, I'm Ken Lee. I'm Vietnamese interpreter. That's I can't, I don't think they come out. Come on.
Hi, I'm Mr. Simeon. I started as a secretary. We're going to start later. We'll follow you.
Hi, I'm Hesu Gavirad Roba. I'm a Russian interpreter. If you want to talk, we'll just leave you here. Yes, I'll do that.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Al-Laqi. I'm translating in Somali. I'm very proud of our work. I was in Somali.
So we're doing this tonight. There'll be another hearing on April 27 at Roosevelt High School. And then the budget committee will formally adopt the budget on May 26, and the board will formally adopt it on June 23. So with that, I've asked our superintendent to give us a quick overview of what the budget looks like and where she sees it, and then we can begin a dialogue.
Okay, in my short version, you have a very long PowerPoint. That was the budget presentation that gives you a lot of the, what's the framework we use when we're going through and developing a budget. The pieces I'm going to point you to, there's a section on state funding and what kind of money do we have to work with from the state, which starts, like, look on page 41. And what you've got is the current level that the legislature has set is 7.255 billion for the state school fund. That is significant. We're still advocating to get to at least a 7.5 billion, okay? So part of how we built this budget is here's what we get to spend if it stays at the 7.255. And then there's another section that says if we get up to the 7.5, here's what we would spend. You then have a section that talks about what are we actually proposing as a spending plan. So that whole last half of the book gives you detail. Part of Portland, what we have in Portland that is significant is we have a local option. And this year, our local option is giving us about $10 million more than we had last year because we went out and renewed it, and it's no longer diverting money to urban renewal. We've got higher assessed values on our property, and compression is unwinding. That let us go out and add staff. Highlights to that, we've got, we're proposing to add a minimum of a full-time counselor in every school regardless of size. We're adding full-day kindergarten. So previously, the state paid for half a day, and we use title dollars and tuition to fund the other half. We now will fund full-day kindergarten. We will be adding arts programming in our middle-grade schools that don't currently have it. We'll be adding some CTE programming, and we're adding secretaries. So at least two full-time secretaries in every school regardless of size. So we did some baseline thresholds of like core services that are really exciting adds in this budget. You'll see that we are proposing to add more staffing at the high school level, so teaching and like coordination for CTE and career, like AVID, those kinds of things. We're taking outdoor school back to a full week. That's very exciting to a huge number of people. We were down to three days during the budget cut. 20 FTEs that are just high school teachers. So anyway, a number of things that are core services to our school staffing that is feeling very different, and we've already punched go on that, and schools are already staffing. You then get to the next section, which are all of our centrally allocated services, that starts on page 69. So this is now counting on the dollars from the state. And part of our philosophy here was trying to just hold steady our current service levels. So some of the grants that were sunsetting that provided wraparound services to students, like our high school graduation initiative, we're looking at just continuing those services. We had an opportunity to match some services with the county, so attendance and mental health workers that we're looking to take advantage of that match. But for the most part, what you see in that section at the 7.255 is holding our current service levels and really trying to, in a year that we get to hold steady, have people experience that we're holding steady. If we get to go to the 7.5, 7.25 adds certified library media capacity in all of our buildings. So it lets us have full-day library services with either library assistants or full-time certified media specialists across the whole system. Again, another core service that was cut back, that we're wanting to build back, adding to our restorative justice and ability to have kids not be sent home from school, but really build capacity of our staff to come up with restorative practices in terms of how we're doing disciplinary kinds of response. Adding a seventh-grade CTE experience. So we have outdoor school in sixth grade. We've got built out, we're building back CTE experiences at the high school level. We wanted to do some kind of a hands-on experience once you're in seventh grade, so it adds that. It adds a little bit more to schools' consolidated budgets, meaning dollars that the principals have control over. So exciting, we did add a bump to that this year. It gives principals some more flexibility in being able to say yes to things in their own building. And then some technology upgrades. And then your last section on page 75, at the 7.5 billion, it adds another 30 teachers into the system with some flexibility to respond to schools that right now have done their staffing but still need, you know, something more. It lets us be responsive to that, and a little bit more in technology and supplies. So you can just see, if we got to the 7.5, what are the other things we would add. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to these guys, and we are looking forward to just hearing from you, your thoughts about the budget.
Certainly. And I guess we'll do one other point, which is the ending point to this, is that it's based on a contingency of 3.5%.
Good, thank you.
So with that, it's open to questions or comments. We'd love to hear what you're thinking.
And actually, I'm going to enter, sorry, at the beginning, one needed. Do you want to do a welcome to?
No, I mean, I don't want to interrupt the flow, but welcome to Franklin, and I'm glad to see people here, and we're just excited to hear some of the exciting things that are going on and where the district's moving. So if you have any questions for me as far as how I'm looking at what those benefits are, please let me know if you have questions.
I can start, because I'm Dave Porter. I'm here tonight with my son Hugh, who's a Franklin graduate, played on their PIL-winning soccer team in what year, Hugh?
2007.
He's now almost finished with the Western Governors University online school. So, but I'm here to talk, I had, back in January, I have written stuff, I think I've given to most people here, and I won't read that tonight. I'll just say that back in January, well, even before that, I've been trying to get the school district and the state to fund paid, paid high school study years abroad for kids that want to do that, and they should get full credit for it. I'm still pursuing that. I spoke to the board in January. The superintendent did not put it in her budget. I want this year, just trying to get two students, $16,000 and some odd dollars. It's hardly a rounding error on the budget. So I can't believe that it's really the money. The way I look at it, the world is changing. We need more kids that have global experiences, no foreign languages, and can, I'm particularly concerned about the rise of China and how we deal with that, so I'm real concerned to get some kids to China. So there are issues around it. You know, I have my ideas, there are existing study abroad organizations that have fees, and the fees for some of them are about in the range of what we pay per student in Portland Public Schools or in high schools around the state. And to my mind, there's no reason we shouldn't just make that connection and make that opportunity available to kids. So I'm hoping that the school board will be a little bit bold. There's issues with the state on getting reimbursement, the state school funds if we do this. I think we can push them on it and see where it goes. I think, I'm just asking for a pilot program to see if we can put the pieces together and put some pressure on the state to do that. So I'll give them copies of the written stuff, and we'd be glad to talk about it further. That's probably more than my time.
Dave, I'd just say, one is, I want to appreciate your, yeah, I got that. Appreciate your focus on language and immersion, and it's, I find it as a board member extremely helpful. I don't always agree with everything you say, but just to have you out there being so focused on something has been very helpful. And I like your idea, and I think it's, you know, things don't change overnight, and so taking a pilot approach to start figuring out how to make it work to make sense to me, and it seems a relatively reasonable cost. So thank you for bringing that up.
When you talk to the state, what do they say about using the state school fund reimbursement to do a pilot?
They don't, I'd have to preface that, but they don't give me the respect I do with a nice, clean answer. I see nothing in the statutes that prohibit it, and there's language that empowers the Board of Education to even make it further clear by saying that adopting a rule that would authorize it, they're authorized to rise to do rules that aren't in conflict. It did go to the State Board of Ed, and a person came in from the Board of Education and verbally told them, not that they couldn't do it, I didn't hear that. What I did hear, that they didn't think it was a good idea.
So for liability reasons or education and academic reasons, do you have any idea?
I don't think there's any, I mean, they may, if you, you know, what I'm asking you to do is to fund the two kids, claim the two kids. It would be not, I mean, you say, you would fund it next year, you know, select the kid and it'd be in next year's budget. The kid wouldn't go till the year after that. You know, sort of, so it takes, so a year from then, you'd count them in your ADM, you submit to this, and let them tell you that it's not right. Or if you want to, like, write them and tell them you're going to do this, but to me, it's not enough to say that somebody in the board doesn't think it's a good idea. They've got to say, we can't do that, or, and/or, you know, and show the statutory language, and then I can go to the legislature and try to change it if they tell me that there is that. I don't see, so, yeah, sorry, long answer.
Can I just ask if, because it seems like, wouldn't the high school level, the language immersion programs, want to build something like that in as an opportunity to do a year abroad?
Whatever, David. What about the old exchange student programs? I mean, they have them for years and years and years where you exchange a student, we took somebody from China, we took somebody from.
Yeah, the Rotary is the best-known exchange program, and it's considerably cheaper. I mean, so a kid, it's maybe 2, 3, 4,000, depending on where they go, as opposed to 9, 10, and 12 on up for other organizations. But they're an organization that supports it in other ways. So these other organizations, the study abroad organizations, and I'm citing one in here that's a Scandinavian-based one, that's very large, 30,000 kids a year or something like that. The way it works, they charge you for what it costs them to run the organization. They usually get free tuition on the other end. It's usually one way, they're not trying to match kids. So you could, they're, same organization might be bringing kids in and sending kids out from the US, but they're not trying to match them like school to school like Rotary does or anything like that. And they're usually getting free tuition at the other end, free room and board with a family. They pay for the international transportation out of the fees that the kids pay. So the rest goes to sort of their overhead in finding the places, finding the families for the kids to live with. And sometimes the programs vary, they might have a week or two at the start where they sort of orient the kids to living abroad. I mean, if you were to do this, it would be nice to have, to go into having summer programs. These are full-year programs, so the kid doesn't have to go for a year. Plus, it'd be nice to have a course or a term, if the kid was going to go abroad, you could develop a course around, you know, how to survive that, and how to live with that and take advantage of it. So, sorry, long answer.
Carol, do we have anything, have we had exchange students in their tenure that you know about? I mean.
You know, I know of people who've hosted exchange students in their home, but I, it's not, I don't know, like, the in-depth.
There's about, I think they're, Rotary's, I mean, it is an equity issue in my mind, too. There are kids who go abroad now. I don't know what the numbers would be out of, you have some kids coming in, but they're not matched necessarily with kids going out. You have kids coming in, you know, you give them tuition, I mean, they're here, they don't have to charge. The kids going out, all roads, there's about 50 Rotary in the northern part of Oregon and a little bit of Washington that go every year. And they're exchanged, so wherever they go, there's a student coming to where they were. I don't know what the numbers are on, oh, the equity issue, because the ones that go are the ones that have the money. I mean, some of these organizations give some scholarships, but for the most part, these are middle-class and up.
Paid for.
And so I'm particularly big, I mean, I think if you want to make the immersion program at King successful with the African-American kids, I don't think you want to just leave them hanging there with Mandarin. I think you need to give them an opportunity to get to China, and the sooner you do that, the sooner you have kids coming back, the sooner it all sort of gets into a virtuous cycle of people being interested and seeing that it's relevant. Not that I think sending African-Americans to kids to China won't have its problems.
And we do do that, like, a number of our immersion programs do the trips to Japan and trips to China. I mean, we are sponsoring numbers of trips, yeah, where they're largely parent fundraising.
But that's an interesting idea.
Probably too, probably be too difficult to send whole schools to Finland, where they're supposed to have the great, Singapore, your school is going to Finland this year.
Let's move on to another topic to see if anybody else wants to say anything.
Well, I had a segue on the topic.
Oh, segue for sure.
Director Kurler.
Yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak to board members and superintendent. My name's Alice Weinstein, and I'm an English as a second language teacher here at Franklin, and my boss is very close to me, so I'm trying to behave myself as best I can. She knows it's not easy for me.
I wanted to just come and put in a plug regarding secondary English as a second language students, such as the young man seated to my right, who's one of my students. And the reason I wanted to come specifically was because we're receiving numbers of students who are functioning at the newcomer level, and there seems to be an issue with getting them services. We're not able to get them over to the PISA program at Benson. And I know that dual-language programs are being pushed heavily by the district, and I am very much in support of those, but at the secondary level, they don't do anything for students such as my young man here. And so I wanted to come and put a plug in for you to at least keep in mind that we have secondary-level ELL learners who are not really being supported, particularly at the newcomer level, but also throughout all the levels of ELL, because when they come in at the secondary level, it's a really rough go for them. And I was going to go on, but since this young man, in speaking with him, because I said, you know, I don't have that much time next week, I got meetings Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and I'm like, you need to make an appointment if you need scholarship help, because he's in the process of doing scholarship applications right now. He said, what, what meeting? What's that about? Because he's a very curious and inquisitive young man, and so he said, I can go to that meeting, I can speak at that meeting, so I'm going to defer over to him, because he had some things that he wrote, and he just wanted to share them, and if you'll excuse, he has notes, because this is not his first language. So if you don't mind.
Also, my name is Yikin, and I'm a senior. I just moved to the United States only one year ago, so, from Vietnam. And last school year, I went to Aloha High School in Beaverton for the last four months of the second semester. And during the summer, I moved here and go to Franklin High School right now. And the reason I'm here tonight is to tell you some problem I had and I saw during this school year. So because of my developing English, in the beginning of the school year, I asked school for me to stay here one more year to improve my English, but they didn't allow me to do that because they want our senior to graduate after four years. So as a senior, I have to take some required class, such as economics and history, which are really hard for me to understand from the teacher, what they want to teach me. Also, I'm a little bit good at math, so I'm taking AP Calculus right now. I can do the work, but when my teacher tries to explain to me how to do the problem, I cannot understand him. So in order to improve my vocabulary, I have to take one more math with AP Calculus. So when I was in Beaverton, or when I went there, I can take like four or more than four ESL class to improve my English, but at here, I can only take one, and that's enough, enough for me and for all the students, too. So, so all of us have been in the United States, like, in a different time, so each of us will have a different English skill. So I think it would be better to give the student came here last time, last time, more class, so they can improve their English better. So the early year, I see that we have a lot of newcomers to the United States, but I'm lucky because I know I did the basic in English, but there are still more students who are having a hard time to learn English because they can only have one class every day. So they still have to take all the regular class with American students. And I know that the ESL teacher, most of them are bilingual, but we only have two teachers here when we have a lot of students, and the time is always limited, so they cannot, it's impossible for them to help our students. So I think it's will be better if the district can give us more money to open more ESL class or open a newcomer program, or hire more students, or educational assistant to help with our homework after school. So for example, here we have one half-time Vietnamese educational assistant to help a Vietnamese student to do the homework after school. When my sister gets stuck in her biology class, she goes to the class, stays there, and listens to the teacher, and after that, she translates and helps my teacher to do the homework and tries to explain to her again in Vietnamese. She also talks to me about my career in the future, or helps my parents to contact with the school, because my parents don't know English. She also helps my family to have some good programs for low-income families, and she is really nice and helpful, but the school don't have enough money to pay her at a full job, full-time job. She only works here at a part-time. So again, I hope and I really want the district can give us more money to give more opportunity for ESL students to have a chance to improve English, so after four years in high school, they can be interested and be ready for college next year. So to be honest, I already passed all the essential skill tests, which are requirement for graduate, but I passed all of them in Vietnamese. I don't pass them in English. And I cannot pass the writing in English, which makes me really sad, but I still have to graduate this year. So I am not the last ESL student, there are still more over there, such as my sister, she freshman right now, and I cannot help her with all her homework, because I have my homework, too. So I will go to college next year, but I don't feel like I'm ready for that.
Can I, is the newcomer program at Benson, is that what you?
Exactly, and we can't get any, we don't seem to be able to get students in, because I believe the policy currently is to hold on to the kids until they get up to a Level Three on the ALPA. And so there's a bottleneck, and I'm sure that Principal Walden could speak to that, although I don't know if she would want to, because I cause enough trouble.
No.
But it is an issue, because we have newcomers. Right now, I have five newcomers, for example, kids, I have three kids just in from Uganda who spent the last nine years in a refugee camp. One of them, the 15-year-old girl, has no formal schooling, have a kid from Guatemala and a kid from Vietnam, and we're making the best of it as best we can, but it's, I mean, I know how to differentiate. I'm in, you know, I'm an old-timer, I know what I'm doing, but I, you know, there is a breaking point. And so I don't know quite what the solution is, perhaps a newcomer center elsewhere in the city, I mean, 82nd Avenue corridor, we used to have one at the Vestal site, I actually started in the district there, gosh, back in 89, but we're stuck. And secondary level is very difficult, because the content is so dense at the secondary level, and he's a very literate person in his primary language, and his math skills, he can run circles around me.
Yeah, but also, like, as a student, I can understand what they think. So we usually move here as a whole family, so after school, I usually have to help my family, too. So if we have a newcomer program here, so it's going to be easier for us to stay here after school to learn more about English instead of going somewhere else further. So we might feel like lazy or get stuck in the town because we have to take the bus or some stuff to go there and then to go home. So we might think like, oh, we have to care about the family, and we don't go to the newcomer in a further place. So it would be better if we have a newcomer program here. And I think that's Franklin, a old school and a famous school, so it's going to be better if you have one. I hear about Franklin a lot.
Is that okay, Principal Walden? Can we do that?
Okay, I'll, can I ask, how many students are we currently serving in the newcomer program, and is that something that we have been looking at expanding?
So here's what I'll tell you, like, and I don't know the exact number of students, you, Steve may know, but I'll tell you, one of the things, I know we're at capacity at Benson, so we have more demand than we're actually able to serve, and one of the things we've been looking at is relocating the PISA on a comprehensive high school campus that allows us to expand it and serve more students, because it's been very successful, and we've got more demand than we're able to meet, and it would allow us to have a broader array of classes that kids can then take in the comprehensive school. So we actually have been looking for a site that may be the future home of PISA, so I'll just say that's one of the things we are looking, and it's really good to hear your testimony about it and the need for it, and the desire for it to be at Franklin, so I'll just say I'll take that as a pitch, as a pitch, yeah.
Can I send him to you the next scholarship application? Because he's.
I've written three letters of recommendation already, and I think it's getting a little stale. The other thing I'll say to you, as you're talking right now, and you're talking about the fifth year, that's also just another thing that I, we would take a look at, is that question, you know, where you're saying you've got the pressure to graduate and truly you would benefit from another year. That one may be one that we can take, you know, look at and look at where we have the ability to be flexible. There's a, there's a longer story to that. Statewide, there are some districts that are actually, after students are getting their diploma, they're holding on to them for a fifth year and paying for them to actually do college while they're supported by their high school community, so that you've got still the support of your high school staff, but you're able to take community college classes or college classes and still have them paid for. And part of our challenge has been a district our size, if we do, it's been small districts doing it. If we do it, and you're using state school fund money, we're going to break the bank. So however, it's a legitimate thing to do. Everybody else is doing it, we may hop in, and you're really compelling, you're giving a very compelling case of why we would try and do that.
And I think that we need to be aware, too, that in response to this question, is why PISA was really pushed by high school?
Exactly.
Because we were saying we are, we're not fairly giving them equal opportunities if we can't provide the language skills and the electives and opportunity to access to classes, so that was why PISA was developed. So we're seeing that, you know, coming in at a Level Three, we're more capable of supporting them with the basics that they have with reading. But we're, you know, I agree with Alice, we're putting students in. So however, it's a legitimate thing to do. Everybody else is doing it. We may hop in and you're really compelled, you're giving a very compelling case of why we would try and do that.
And I think that we need to be aware too, that in response to this question is why PISA was really pushed by high school.
Exactly.
Because we were saying we are, we're not fairly giving them equal opportunities if we can't provide the language skills and the electives and opportunity to access to classes. So that was why PISA was developed. So we're seeing that, you know, coming in at a level three, we're more capable of supporting them with the basics that they have with reading. But we're, you know, I agree with Alice. We're putting students in that are learning sight words into an economics class. There is no logic behind that. And, and the FTE doesn't match up. So that was a response. We just need to figure out how we can make that more viable. Yeah, exactly.
Is there anything, Carol, in this budget that supports this?
That supports the expansion of PISA?
Pizza, yes.
There's not at this moment.
I'm going to make a proposal during the budget.
Good.
That we do set it up. It'd be great if somebody would help me to make sure it's clear. And I think it actually is not just high school, but really goes down to the sixth grade because in the sixth grade, you start to shift classes and the pro, if you have a child all year long, there's a lot you can do, I mean, all day long, all year, there's a lot you can do. But if you have them come in for 45 minutes or 50-minute class once a day, you can't do anything with it. So it's really sixth grade through 12th grade, in my opinion. I've been spending a lot of time thinking about it and working in dark.
And the PISA has been like the, what so far, I mean, it's a fairly new program and it's been very successful in its short life. And we want, we are interested in expanding it. So, so Steve, good.
I want to speak on the same issue.
Okay.
Okay. I graduated Cleveland High School over 50 years ago. And in that day, the district was at 70,000 students. But we had the PISA program at, at Cleveland in those days. And it was very interesting to observe various cultures. Some went through it very quickly and successfully. Others took longer periods of time. I think on, on the district's staff, having worked with her when she was principal over at Mount Tabor, is Bum Trong, who, who spoke about her difficulty when she was at Madison, getting adjusted as a student. And, and it revolved around her, her math skills. She was a superior math student in Vietnam, but struggled mightily. And only to learn that the reason being was in Vietnam, the decimal point occurs in a different way than it does in, in the way we do math in, in the United States. And, and so it took a half a year or better at Madison before, before she began to click, you know, as to what, what was necessary. So I'm very supportive of these programs. And I would certainly applaud any efforts that we could do to bump them up.
Oh, thanks. I'm Suzie. I know, I think, most of you guys, I'm Suzie. I'm Gladia Bartley. I'm here just speaking on behalf of the Advanced Scholar Program here at Franklin High School and our AP programming. I, I really appreciate the way that you guys listen. I've seen you listen to so many different communities around the city all the time. So I just want to start by saying I can see how much work you guys put into really hearing people, and I appreciate it. I want to ask if you'd be willing to take a look at these documents. They're the most recent documents. Actually, they come from Portland Public Schools related to the success of the AP program at Franklin. Can I give you guys each a copy? Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. So there are two, two, and then, yeah.
Okay.
So one, a couple of things I'd like people to know is that Franklin currently has the largest AP program in the district. You may already be aware of that, but if you weren't, we have the largest program. We have 576 students enrolled in advanced placement course, or advanced placement courses currently. This year, we will have 780 test takers. I applaud that because it's a choice test. It's not a standardized test where students are being forced to take it. These students feel the confidence to actually sign up for it on their own and choose the test. It also offers a benefit to them, as you know, which is credit for college if they earn a certain score. A few things I'd like to highlight on here, you have, the documents that you have are Franklin's enrollment in AP courses and last year's enrollment across the district. And the things that I'd like to really highlight are that in just one year, so we've had a lot of notoriety in the past five years, but what I want to talk to you about today is that just in one year, we've had a 10% rise in the number of free and reduced lunch, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, taking AP courses, going from 35% all the way to 45% just this year alone. So it was already going well. And then we got this information about two weeks ago. And again, that thanks to Portland Public Schools to providing, for providing that for us. Also, if you look at Hispanic students, it went from 31% enrolled to 46% of our Hispanic students in grades 10 through 12 enrolled in AP courses. There are very, very specific strategies that we use right here in this library to target our communities of color. We had an amazing event where it used to be that we had one or two seniors come out who were Hispanic or Native American and speak to the younger students to try to recruit them. This year, that whole wall was full of seniors. And we also had our staff who represent those different populations speak about their experiences. Our principal gave an amazing speech about, a very empowering speech for our Latino and Native American communities. And we have really homegrown strategies that we're using to promote this. It's not happening by accident. We do the same for Native American students, Hispanic students, and African-American students in different ways. And we also are trying to expand that in different ways for our Pacific Islander population and any population that's marginalized historically from these classes. Because we know that does happen, and that's definitely evidenced across the district in other places. I don't mean that in a shaming way, but that we have something here that we really want to grow and something that could be spread. If you also look at Madison High School, I believe you'll notice, maybe if you have time later, that they are doing pretty well as well. And they're using some of the strategies that we use here. So the, the thing that I want to ask you guys to take a look at is if you could please take a look to make sure that there is funding to support our AP program and our Advanced Scholar Program here at Franklin High School. I would like to note that our program is more than twice as large than any other Advanced Scholar Program in the district. We have 465 students who have committed to taking four or more classes. The Madison program has 125 students, and the Roosevelt program is also growing, and that's all great. But with those numbers, we need some more support and we need continued support over time. Just would really appreciate you guys taking a look at the line items to make sure that's there. Because we are going strong. We're not going to quit, but we do need your support.
What are you talking about when you say support?
When I, when I say support, okay, so imagine that 465 students turn in their applications to be part of this Advanced Scholar Program. When that happens, and we've grown from 88 students in 2007 to 465 now, that means that Juanita and I have to sit down and look at who can be the new mentors. Which teachers can we now expand to? Because each student gets a mentor group. 465 students are grouped into groups of 15 kids, each having a mentor teacher. So that it really employs our actual staff here at the school in a mentoring role to support these students in their dream of getting to college. And just, I guess I'm saying, as that's expanded, there are so many different needs. Needs from organizing all that paperwork, entering the data into our spreadsheets. I hope I'm making sense, all the way to paying those mentors. We now have 34 teachers who act as mentors. And it's, it's an amazing endeavor. We have ideas for expanding that so that we could actually, one idea, for example, for next year is to expand that. So that we've realized that we have some amazing mentors, teachers who are mentors, right? And they have a lot of experience because they've been with the Advanced Scholar Program for a while. We also have some brand-new teachers coming in and learning about the mentoring role. So the next idea is to, is to involve veteran mentors with brand-new teachers. So that there's, there's tiers of mentoring going on from veteran teachers to younger teachers and all going down to the students. So there are so many ways we can expand, so many ways we can make this better. But really, I am the sole employee of the Advanced Scholar Program, other than the mentors, who are paid maybe just one to two hours per month at their union, you know, hourly rate to do the mentoring with kids. I just am asking that we have continued support for that and for trips. Like, thank you. Like, we went to Portland State this year. I'd love to eventually have it so that all juniors in the program can go to University of Seattle or Seattle Pacific. And we have buses and we have more funding. So after AP exams, everyone jumps in a bus and we take our juniors there. There are many ideas that I'm not even able to say right now, but we do need some more support. And it does require additional time from me and other people.
Are you putting in a, are you putting in a proposal or something to the superintendent for budget?
I'll tell you what, what he is in. We, this last year, built in, I think for the first time, actual $50,000. Does that sound right? This year for Frank, to sustain Franklin's program. And then another 50, in the year we're in right now, to, for Madison to start a program, which continues next year. So those are both in. So just to tell you, that continues. And then I believe we did another 50 that was to start a third school doing it. So we didn't expand your amount.
25?
Was it 25? Was 25 for the other one? Okay, so.
25 for which?
For which one?
For a third school.
For the third one. But we're still holding these guys at 50 and 50.
So what you might want to do is take a look at your current budget. And if that works, great. If not, then you should communicate. And be as specific as you can.
Okay, can I also ask, are there any, are there any contract issues in this? Or is this just extended pay? How does it, how does it, how does it work?
It's just extended pay. And that's something that I've been able to go over with Gwen and the union and they're aware of how we do it. So they're very supportive. And it's mostly because it's not merit pay. It's just pay for work that the teachers do. And it's, they're agreed upon hourly wage. So it's really cool.
And I'm putting in three periods per day. So I have .5 FTE out of general to support her. We have a .5 for the Avid and AP coordinator, but we're building Avid. So that's kind of the focus with that money right now. And even with saying that, that .5 for AP really is about test management and getting paperwork, that type of thing done. But what Suzie's doing, as far as outreach, she's been supporting the other two schools, all of those types of things. But that's been coming out of, you know, a halftime position for our, from our general.
And I, I'll be honest, I would love to see us have one other teacher released for one or two periods a day, just maybe a little more FTE to support the Advanced Scholar Program. So someone else can learn what, you know, what it is to direct the program. And also that I could be freed up a little bit to help the other schools. I have been mentoring Brady, thank you for saying that, Brady at Madison all year. And I haven't had any additional support for that. I will say that. I've just done that because I believe in the program. But at some point, you know, I, I would ask that you would consider that.
And there's the other opportunity is when, if in fact, we end up at the $7.5 billion state number, then we've put in our, that next tier of what would we add? Another 30 FTE that would be available. Like Antonio in the Office of Schools will have 30, another 30 FTE that you can request and say, here's the thing we're trying to accomplish. So that becomes a really straightforward ask, yeah, to make, to make that happen. So. And right now, like, we did just add another 20 FTE to high schools. And anyway, for some of this. And the other thing is that the other add that would go into place is the consolidated budgets, again, which, again, you have got, so you've got some other places if we get to the next level, that you have decided based control of what you do with it. But you can make the ask for it.
And thank you.
Yeah, thank you for you. Just like such an incredible program and such, Suzie had took a picture of all of the Advanced Scholars at Franklin. It was like humongous number of students standing in front. I was like, are you kidding me? Those are all, it was totally a great picture. So.
Thank you very much.
A very colorful picture.
Colorful picture and really cool. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Suzie.
So the, we started at Franklin and I think two other high schools, the college and career readiness class, I guess. And I understand it's going to be expanded to the other high schools. But I haven't really heard how it's been evaluated before making that decision. And I kind of, my daughter doesn't talk to me a lot at this age. But she has kind of hinted that, you know, she does, she feels like as a freshman, she's not really ready for that kind of a class. And I'm just wondering if maybe instead of expanding that program to the other high schools, if maybe, you know, we could use it to expand the program that Suzie was just pitching for.
Well, the ninth, yeah, yeah. Well.
I mean, you guys are working as high school principals on?
On the ninth grade curriculum for the, for those classes. But, and each school's doing it a little differently. We're, we're, we were in the pilot part of that process and working with Jeannie Yurkovich in the CTE program coordination to talk about how we are setting a standard and a base. So we're going to be looking at that college and career class as the way in which we're helping solidify that transition from eighth to ninth grade. In, in addition to the college and career exploration pieces that they'll do, they'll also be getting some pre-Avid training. They'll also be getting some pre-AP vocabulary training. So we're looking at the curriculum. We've actually have one teacher who's, we're using that Avid money to be released to work on that curriculum, who is our AP 11th grade teacher, language teacher. So that way, we're, we're adding the writing and reading and looking at that as the base stone to move our kids forward. So that is a question that we had because the curriculum came from district, but it needed to be massaged. It was a pilot. So this year, it's going to be a lot more solid. So how that impacts what Suzie's doing, it's, it's building the base to have our kids more ready by the time they can make those options in sophomore and junior year. So that's how we're implementing both and increasing the Avid perspective to help that middle ground kid. Adding more AP support classes as well in reading and writing, kids who need the extra reading and writing.
I'm actually going to talk to all three of these items here. My daughter's a senior here at Franklin this year. At the end of this year, she will have taken nine AP courses here at Franklin and one dual-credit course through, she's getting dual-credit this year for her anatomy and physiology course through PCC. She didn't do so well on some of her AP tests, but if she does as well this year, she thinks she's going to, she's going to enter Portland State with almost 32 credits under her belt. Okay? That is huge for all of these kids. Betsy, what you were saying about the college and career, Maggie's been TA-ing in one of the college and career classes. She's been acting as a teacher's assistant in one of the college and career classes. My daughter, as a senior, feels that that type of a class is imperative for freshmen in high school. They need to start, everybody needs to start learning it when they're a freshman or even younger. There needs to be some exposures to college and career and college and career readiness and what to do to get there. Suzie's AP program is phenomenal. My fear as a parent who's had a child go through her Advanced Scholar Program and through the AP program at Franklin, is that eventually the district is going to pull her out of the schools to run the Advanced Scholar Program for the district. And I'm going to implore you not to do that. She is too valuable as an educator here on this campus. One of the things that this campus does that I have heard a lot of schools don't do is we have an open AP system. There are a lot of schools that will track AP, that, you know, you're going to be an AP student. Yeah, you, maybe not so much. So you're not going to be encouraged to take AP classes. That's not been my experience here at Franklin. And I would encourage you as a board to do what you can do to expand these programs and to untie them from the tracking. Because you've got kids who are excellent in math, who don't read very well or don't write very well. Why shouldn't they be allowed to take AP classes in math? Some schools won't let them. The Advanced Scholar Program is intricate. What, what you were saying here about a fifth year program for seniors. At PS, I work at Portland State University. We have a co-admit situation with PCC where students can use their financial aid and split it between the two schools. We have some dual-credit classes here at Franklin where if you're at a certain level, you can take a class here at Franklin, you also get PCC credit. Why can't the K through 12 and the community college levels work together to give some of the English language learners that fifth year that they so desperately need? And that would be my charge to you as a board, just to start looking at some of those items to where we can integrate with the colleges, with the middle schools, and really give these kids the start that they need.
And good luck if you want to pass Suzie's English class.
Oh, man. Oh, man.
But you know what, no failures.
Anybody else?
I'm Brittany Lakin, I'm a parent from Kelly Elementary and this is our cluster. So I know everyone here knows about Franklin, let me bring you back to grade school. We have a lot of required trainings that take the teachers out of the classroom. And it could be a perception, I don't have numbers, but it feels disruptive to the students at that level. They rely on a consistent teacher in the classroom. And I think one solution could be to extend the teacher contract, to give them days that aren't teaching days.
Would you repeat that one, please?
To give the teachers more non-teaching days to do training, so that their training doesn't fall on teaching days.
Is Kelly unusual because it's got the language immersion program, or is this pretty common? Would this be a complaint that we would hear from?
You could hear it from numbers, yes. And I'm just going to say, well, so one of the things we did do in the contract this last time was add, for our focus in priority schools, added days that we have the option to add that are outside the, that don't, because there was mandatory PD, professional development for those schools that then meant that kids were missing more school, more instructional time, so we added more days. We had the option to add those days for those schools in particular, but that's a good thing to add to our conversation and next time we are back in contract negotiations.
So when would that happen, like in the summertime, or?
Like you have to have it continuous with the, with the contract, so it can't be plunked out in the middle of the summer somewhere. You have to have, like extend it one way or the other.
We either pull them back two days earlier in August, or two days, hold them two days longer.
Or, or we don't take the teachers out of the classes for the training. We, we, instead of prioritizing the training, we prioritize the teacher being in the classroom. That's personally what I've talked about.
And just don't do the training.
We'd like to see, don't, or to do it after school instead of others, or we have some late openings to do it there, but this, we pull, I was talking to a principal and their teachers were being pulled over sixteen days out of the, out of the classroom and sent out for training of some sort, sixteen days. And a lot of the training I looked at and thought, yeah, some of it's how to take a do-it test. I mean, there's, I just think it's something we need to look at and I'm going to suggest we do that come July. And hopefully, and we'll suggest we, we need to analyze that whole thing across the district, what we're doing. And there isn't any question in my mind that we need to do it. When those teachers are out of the classroom, it is, you don't have to, it is disruptive, every time they're out, it's disruptive. Maybe once a year, they can figure out a time to get out of there and it doesn't disrupt, the rest of the time it's disruptive. And sometimes we can't even find substitutes to put it in there because we take them all, a lot out from one school. I mean, it's a problem that we need to identify as a problem. We push so much for the training, we forget about the classroom sometimes, so that's my own opinion on that.
So one of the things we are putting in the budget this year is the ability to have some of those trainings happen during the summer. What we have to budget for is paying teachers during the summer, but they're not like everybody. Like there's a three-day literacy, early literacy camp that's going on where we're working on dyslexia and early literacy, but it's paying teachers, like two hundred and fifty teachers during the summer to come do that. All the Avid training we're doing is going to happen during the summer. But we, again, the big budget item for us is paying people to come on days that are not contract days, but that's one of the things. So it's speaking to exactly that, we're not pulling people out during the year, we're trying to use summer that way. And generating the dollars to pay people.
But you don't have to pay for subs then, because the kids aren't in school, so it's great.
Right, but we have to pay, you still have to have dollars because you're paying people to come do the training.
It's the difference, it's the difference between the substitute that you would pay and the dollars for the teacher.
And are those mandatory, for those two fifty, or is it?
Say it again?
Is it mandatory for those two fifty?
No, I think they're, they're not mandatory, yeah.
It's not as expensive that way than something you used to need.
Roger, before I get you, see if there's anybody else.
News out of the gathering.
The superintendent's proposed budget this go-around adds some additional funds for custodial areas. When I was the PTA president here at Franklin, for, I became intimately acquainted with the problems of custodians in that Franklin, for example, is a three hundred thousand square foot building or more. And we're supposed to have six custodians at night. But how, lo and behold, whenever there's absenteeism and in the elementary grades and middle grade, middle schools, our custodians would get levied and sent out. And so quite literally, there were nights where Franklin was getting only two custodians here to, to. And that hardly gives you time to put new toilet paper in all the, all the eighteen toilet rooms there are in the building and, and forget about cleaning the gym and, and a whole variety of things. You know, as, as the, as the superintendent's budget acknowledges, we are a school district that has multiple buildings that are sixty-five years old or older. And Franklin has celebrated its centennial last year and is a good example of that. And I noticed when we had the budget hearing out at Wilson, you know, the custodians out there were waxing or polishing the floors. Good luck with ever having time to do that here at Franklin. We just don't have the staff to do that. And, and our students really deserve better than that. And, and I also became aware that the contract that we have with the Custodians Union is different than the other contracts that we have with the other, other entities that, and, and I believe they come under civil service for some reason, and it complicates how, how it's dealt with. But anyway, get it fixed and anything you can do to bump up providing better custodial care for our buildings would be greatly appreciated by our students.
And the teachers. And the teachers, too.
The one he's looking at is, if we get to the seven point five billion, we added some, or the maintenance budget, that is specifically for that, yeah. And again, yeah.
Could I segue into that? I'm glad you brought that up. I'm Dave Vachi, I'm Portland Public School Custodian. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I noticed if you get, and thank you for this budget booklet, the four and a half percent unassigned contingency. He is correct about sometimes it's reduced to one or two people in a high school, which also contributes to, sometimes somebody would have to do a double shift and they're tired, they could get injured and then get on workers' comp and all that. My question is, in that four and a half percent contingency, is it possible to get some relief or rover help? I know that that was discontinued as far back as 2002 or less. Civil service custodians don't get subs, it's called relief or rover, rover help, where when somebody's out, a full-time custodian would fill in. And that would really help with the district if, if, I'm not asking for total relief help, just some relief help. Is that, if that's possible?
Any other questions or comments, concerns?
I was just reading the Franklin Post article about the super SAC meeting with the students, bringing their perspective about the budget and there's also discussion of the high school schedule. And I was wondering if there's any updates on whether the high school schedule's going to change for next year, given the arbitrator's decision?
Okay, so they've, I know they've been working on, there's been high school principals and PAT and some central office folks have been working on the schedule for next year and it does get to look, it'll still be an eight-period day, so that's still is what's being worked on. And just, and there was pretty unified feedback about what has not been working for people. A lot of which are, you know, we have parameters on this year's schedule that are not, not exactly, not the same next year. So the one thirty is not in play next year, so it gives a little more room to move. And I know, and I know the skinny day was a day, so I think they were looking at a two-week rotation.
Yeah, they're looking at a couple of options, but looking at solid Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, A-Day, B-Day, A-Day, B-Day, and then the Friday either rotating or the Friday being the alternating, or we'll go back to the regular A-B all year. So those are some decisions that I understand that Greg Wallach was talking about, getting some final decisions made and that we would be hearing in the next week.
And student, the students held a one-hour budget hearing and then a one-hour high school schedule, you know, conversation with people giving feedback on it. And it was really consistent with adult, I mean, everybody's feedback and the conversations were very consistent, they weren't, they weren't.
Yeah, everybody was consistent that this year wasn't a lot of fun.
Yes, that one definitely.
But that it was impactful to all of us in various ways, I guess is a better way of saying. But, but the consistency, because I was, I attended the meeting with PAT as they started the discussions on what the schedule should look like, whether it should move back, whether we should stay. We were very consistent on what, what was best practice in supporting kids and longer break time, you know, those types of things. A little longer on lunch, all those limitations that the one thirty kind of held us under this year, that'll be a little more flexed last year, that will mix, that will, you know, that will have an opportunity to have it be kind of a balance between both and making sure we're hitting large numbers of instructional minutes, but as well as meeting the nine ninety and finding that happy balance. So the things that we saw, the suggestions were very positive. So I think we'll be happy with whatever that Friday might look like, but it's just getting a final answer is where we're at.
And so all high schools will have the same schedule?
Just to say, this has been one of the things, this has been really worked hard to get, so we have a consist, a consistent schedule that'll allow us to do more ultimately flexing between if there is like a CTE program that a student wants to go to at one school that's not offered at their school, it lets us maximize the system ultimately. So it's been, one of the things we will work to hang on to as we're also building the kind of offerings we have for kids, that then you've got a little more room to move in terms of what you can access.
And balancing that with, you know, the teacher contract and the working.
It's a significant puzzle, you'd say. But yes, we're working to hold on to it. And the A-B days lets you really then maximize the co-op opportunities as we're able to do that.
I was trying to find out here how much PPS then will pay per student?
Say it again?
How much will be, how much does PPS pay per student per year? Is it this page forty-two?
That's what the state pays us per student, that's the calculation per student.
Are you asking how much?
How much goes to each school? It, it varies from school to school. And, yeah, the per student amount varies. And actually, we don't calculate that until after the school year has started, because the way we allocate resources to schools is not to give them dollars. Mostly what we give them is we give them FTE. So we say to, based on number of students and a variety of other factors, which you could, there's a slide in there that has like four colored dots on it that sort of talks about how we allocate staff to schools. But what we say is, you have school, this school based on the number of students and various other factors, you have a principal, two secretaries, a counselor, and seventeen and a half FTE. And then the principal figures out who they're going to hire with that. And it could be that you have two schools with similar numbers of students and one school has a bunch of very experienced teachers who will tend to be more expensive. Another school has a, a population of relatively inexperienced teachers who are less expensive. So they will end up with more dollars in one school than another, because we don't give them the dollars. Because if we did that, we'd have a nightmare situation of people cutting teachers because they're too expensive and what have you. And staffing schools is a fascinating process as it is without adding that, that layer to it. So in late fall, we have a team that calculates that, that budget per student. And that's when those dollars get published. But as I say, the big, the big thing is, the primary allocation of resources to schools is not based on dollars, it's based on, on numbers of people.
Did that answer your question?
It probably answers my question, it's better than I expected.
Thank you for asking that kind of question.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I think sometimes what she was bringing up is kind of the difficulty though, in, in terms of just being, you know, a citizen, trying to understand all of this. Because, you know, you look at the numbers from the state and they say, well, we don't see what the problem is. We're giving the schools seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-two cents per student. You know, that doesn't translate when it gets down to the schools. We look at the Portland Public Schools budget, it's a huge comprehensive document. That's fine, but what does it mean to my daughter's fourth-period English class? You know, and that's where I think as, as citizens, I appreciate you guys coming out, because again, it's taking these huge, huge, huge numbers and gradually shoveling them all into a funnel and spitting it out at a school level that hopefully we can understand. So thank you for coming out and doing it, but that is one of the, the real tricks, is understanding how it all fits together.
This, I forget what it was called now, but the school improvement survey that we did earlier, are we going to be seeing results from that?
We are.
Pretty soon?
Actually, John, do you want to speak for that, Ixak?
Hi, I'm John Isaacs, the Chief of Communications and Public Affairs for PPS. So the survey's been completed and the data is being analyzed by Davis Hibberts Majal, who's our third-party survey partner. So we wanted to get a outside analysis, top-line analysis of the data. We're scheduled to release and report the district-wide results to the school board on May twelfth. So we had outstanding participation, our, our aspiration was forty percent of all families and we got to just under thirty percent. So we had approximately sixty-five hundred household families participate in the survey. And then we got much higher participation from staff and students, so. For a first time to get almost a, you know, a third of our families participating is really, is really outstanding. And the person we work with at Davis Hibberts told me that this is the biggest participation. They've had experience with, in surveys they've analyzed, which is pretty great. And can I just real quickly plug, we have one more survey that's live now. That is a survey that will inform the District-Wide Boundary Review Advisory Committee, it's called PPS 2025. And while the Successful Schools Climate Survey asked for all of you to give feedback on your experience at the school your children are at, this survey asks big-picture questions about the future of the district as we prepare to plan for growth of about six thousand students in the next fifteen years. So our, our enrollment is projected to grow by approximately six thousand students in fifteen years overall, which is about the size of, over the size of three of our high schools. So this asks questions about boundary changes and grade configuration and what are the, what are you considered to be the key elements of a strong neighborhood school? So big-picture questions that will go and help inform the Boundary Review Advisory Committee. And you can do that now at oregonskitchentable.org.
Well, any other comments or questions before we adjourn? Yep?
My name's Harry Travis, I'm a career social
I'm a career social statistician specializing in education statistics. Usually I would not comment on someone else's survey, but I'd like to say that professionally, that response rate may have impressed a consultant, but it's wholly inadequate. It's inadequate to make sound inferences, it's a case of dismally low expectations. Apparently the school district is continuing to do what school districts around the country do, which is to survey and collect as many, as much data as they can without properly sampling, and, and seeing that they get a high response rate on surveys that I have professionally been involved in, I strive for, and have been associated with people to get response rates of up to 90%. We pay very heavily to get those kinds of rates, but we want to be clear that we don't have a volunteer bias in our surveys. As long as the district, this district, as many as all others that I'm familiar with, or most others that I'm familiar with, continue to accept volunteer surveys with response rates that look great compared to consumer response rates, hell, online 5%, and, and the client is cheering because he's been led to cheer that 5% is good. 30%, you still have 70% of the, of the parents not responding, and you really do not know that, that you're doing well or badly. A better design survey, substituting smarts for quantity will get you better data. Thank you.
Well, appreciate you coming, Superintendent, thank you for also being here, and Principal, thank you for having us here, meeting adjourned.
Thank you for your good questions, still.